So you've made it through three hours of the regular show on terrestrial radio and you wanted a little bit more, so that's why you found the Gun Talk After Show podcast, where we saved all the best things that we can't say on regular radio. Now here's Tom, Michelle and Jim for the Gun Talk After Show.
Hi, it's the After Show. We have Jim over there. Hi Jim.
Hello, it's been awhile.
Yes, it has. And Michelle, I am so sorry that you had to take care of him while I was gone.
It's Mother's Day after all.
Yeah.
Should've taken care of me.
There's been some mothering.
You've been taking care of men all your life, haven't you?
All my life. Yeah, I got a girl in there too, so that was a good thing.
Yeah.
That's a good thing, that's right. Exactly. Oh, so what are you doing for Mother's Day, other than working here?
That's about it, I hope. Maybe sort some laundry, you know, those good mom things.
Wow, party animal.
Woo!
You know how to have fun.
Crazy woman, just gotta dial it back a little bit, okay?
Living on the edge.
We were gonna shoot, but it's a little too windy to be doing that outside, so we decided not to do that. And instead I came to work, you know?
Do it inside.
You know, when it's really windy and you can't hit anything, then you just go out and shoot up into the air.
Or it could be like Emmy and, you know, be a spectacular shotgun shooter and just pretend that's the one I was aiming at. That was a terrific story.
Yeah, that's what I was, well, it's like, you know, I mean, cannot tell you how many times we've had ducks come past the blind, and you shoot at the front one and you hit the one that's like six back. You go, yeah, we always want to start from the back.
Yeah, meant to do that, yeah.
Can't take out the lead bird, that's crazy.
That's right. Doing the, what was it, the Audie Murphy deal? You start at the back and you shoot them as, you know, coming up the line that way. The ones in front don't know that the other one's been shot behind them.
Yeah. So if you take out the lead bird, do the rest just freeze there?
Maybe they're Sergeant York, I don't know. It's one of those military guys who did that deal. I don't know. Some, it was, Gary Cooper did it in a movie, I remember that.
Okay.
So...
You're living in the past, treasure.
Yeah, but it was so nice. There were no cell phones then. A lot to be said for that.
No doubt.
No one videoing those accidental wrong target mishaps.
Yeah, really. That's right. No video proof of anything. Exactly right. Yeah, I had actually, somebody said, well, you know, will you be the photographer at this event? I said, why? Everybody there is the photographer.
That's true.
Yeah, nowadays, yeah.
You know what I mean? Everybody has a camera, everywhere they go.
It's not on Facebook, it didn't happen.
So true. And I was just, in fact, I just saw a story that there are restaurants or cafes who are denying access to their wifi to stop customers from burying their faces in their laptops to compel them to actually talk to one another.
Wow, that's a novel idea.
Right.
Some places restaurants have actually put cellphone jammers in. Of course, that's illegal, but they still do it.
Yeah, my kid's school has that. You can't use your cellphone in school, yeah? Which I always wonder, what happens if there's a, you know, catastrophe, somebody needs their phone, but...
Yeah, and it's actually illegal, so I would absolutely have an issue with a school that does that.
Well, they're tearing the school down June 11th, so maybe that's why.
Okay, that works for me. I think that's a good punishment.
That'll teach you.
Some would say that's harsh, Jim, but you know, you do what you gotta do, man.
No, no, I'm not personally tearing it down.
Him and his bulldozer.
Hey!
Yeah, I always wanted to just rent a piece of destructive equipment, like a bulldozer or something, and just go tear something down.
Yeah, even a bobcat would be fun. You could move cars and...
Yeah.
Yeah, heck yeah.
Okay, let's go for it. Alright, you had something on your mind, what?
I, Thursday, I had the funniest, but probably the best teaching lesson I've ever had related to firearms, ever.
Were you on the giving or receiving end of the teaching?
Uh, both, actually. I was teaching, but it forced me to learn. The teacher became the student, young Padawan learner.
That's metaphysical, right there, you know?
Yeah, it's pretty deep. Sheriff, I invited a sheriff to come shooting about a year ago. Gave him my name, business card and that, et cetera. And said, yeah, if you ever want to come on out shooting. It's kind of an open invitation to the law enforcement around here. So I get a phone call Wednesday, hey, this is such and such, and you gave me an offer and I'd like to take you up on it. I'm like, oh, cool. Come on out tomorrow morning. He said, you mind if I bring a couple with me? I said, oh, absolutely not. So he brings them out and we start talking. These folks are, all three of the, the officer and his two friends, I believe their family were Asian, and talked to the officer, everything's fine. I went to talk to the students and they're nodding very agreeingly. And it took me about two, three minutes to realize they didn't speak a word of English.
They had no idea what you were saying?
No. They're polite, though. Really polite.
Okay, okay.
And they were, only spoke Cantonese. And he said, oh yeah, I probably should've told you, they only speak Cantonese. I said, oh, so then...
This is gonna make teaching a little bit more challenging.
Yeah, I said, great, I'm really glad you came then, so you can translate. He says, I don't speak a lick of it.
This is gonna be fun.
Yeah, but they wanted to shoot, so I'm trying to, you know, run down some basics, you know, guns always loaded and just start with basic stuff. And I realized they couldn't understand me, so I did what I think everybody does. I talk slower and louder.
Right, because now they're gonna understand English because you've done that, right?
And I caught myself a few seconds in, I caught myself doing that, I go, well, you're an idiot. Fix anything, but you know, I see why people do it. Was my gut response.
Sure, that's what you go to. Yeah, you go, okay, that's not gonna work.
Well, and they were into, and they had actually bought firearms. They were okay to buy firearms, they're brand new, and they wanted to learn how to use what they had just bought. So I figured, well, okay, English isn't gonna work. So I just stopped speaking altogether. And I just showed them parts of the gun and showed them how to check that it's unloaded, et cetera. And that was kind of okay, but still, I wasn't about to put a firearm in their hands, even with me right, you know, hovering over them. So I decided I'm gonna shoot first and show them, you know, 22 and work up. And by the time I got to shotgun, the gal was a little intimidated by it, so she ended up not going that far. But the guy loved it. He wanted to start there. I'm like, no, 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 we're gonna start where I did. And so I, you know, walked through it with them and showed them, you know, barrels always in a safe direction. And it was, it was more visual than anything else, because language wasn't gonna work. And when they saw the destructive, and because 22, it's kinda hard to gauge destruction of a 22 round. So we got, we got to 38 specials and then the shotgun, obviously, was, you know, blowing this pan off of the stool we had. And their eyes opened up that, wow, this, this isn't just a sport, this, this is potentially deadly if you don't pay attention. And that, that's what really got, I think it was the shotgun that really made them both say, okay, this can be fun, but this is a serious business here.
Sure.
And the smile came off their face a little bit, except the guy who had to try it. And he eventually got there, took him about an hour and he got up to it and he loved it. But it was just so weird to have to rethink, you know, how, how do you get a point across to somebody that doesn't know the language?
Wow.
Yeah.
It is interesting, because it's a complex thing to try to teach somebody.
Yeah, it is. And it's not like I would, now, okay, well, they've had an hour on the range, they're good to go. But I've invited them back and we'll try it again. And just, it was baby steps, you know, she shot probably two mags, I think, of the 22, and we went up to 38 special. He had also about a 1911, she chose not to shoot that or the shotgun. But she, she thought the 22 was like the coolest thing, and then we ended up retrograding back to the 22 again for her, because I wanted, she wanted to keep shooting it, she really enjoyed that. And so she, she got a chance to do that. And it was cool, it was a real lesson for me to, because I've never come across that.
That is not...
But I know what I'm gonna ask next time somebody says, hey, can I bring somebody for you to teach them to shoot? Well, let's start with the basics. Do they speak English?
Do they speak English, because...
Because I do.
Can they read English?
Uh, they must've had to, because they fill out the paperwork to purchase the stuff, so, yeah.
So maybe that would be one way to cross that language barrier.
It could be.
And you're such an artiste, you could draw your pictures out, or at least make them very basic.
Boom, boom comes from here, boom. But, so I don't know if anybody's ever come across that or not, but it was, it was eye-opening and, and they, they were really safe about it, once they realized that destructive, I think that was the big thing, because they, I don't think they had a clue on how destructive a firearm can be.
Well, and, of course, you can't tell on movies, in movies, you know, people get shot and run around, and get shot and run around.
Right.
And, you know, the problem, of course, is the balance between wanting to show them this is powerful, but not wanting to frighten them away from enjoying the shooting experience.
Correct, correct. And that's where I had a little, little bit of a roll of the dice there. But it turned out, like I said, when we stepped her back off 38, back to 22, by her choice, because she pointed to the other one, her eyes lit up, I'm like, I think that means I wanna shoot that one again. So, so she shot another mag of that. And it was cool, it was really neat, but it was, it was probably a bigger learning experience for me than it was for them.
Hmm, interesting. Well, what a fun deal. Anyway, I've got a story I wanna tell. Well, let's take a quick break here and we'll come back. I wanna tell you about something we did for the TV out at the range. It turned out to be really instructive and fun at the same time, alright? Be right back.
Smith &amp; Wesson brings 10 years of development to your holster with the new enhanced M&amp;P M2.0 semi-auto pistol. In 940 and 45, with a crisp and lighter trigger pull, the M2.0 has aggressive texture for a great grip, extended stainless steel chassis for rigidity, and four Palmswool grip inserts for a perfect fit. The remarkable M&amp;P, even better in version 2.0. See it at smith-wesson.com.
If you're like me, you don't have money to burn, but you still wanna buy guns, ammo and accessories. That's why we created Gun Dealio. That's a free, yes, a free smartphone app. Just download it and start getting the deals. Could be discounts, offers of free magazines for your gun, or you could be the first to hear about new stuff from gunmakers. Here's how it works. With Gun Dealio on your phone, you get alerts when you enter a gun store. Special deals, you know? You don't have to do a thing. It'll do a lot of other cool things, like let you watch gun videos and listen to Gun Talk Podcast. Plus, check it anytime for hundreds of deals and offers. Getting more while spending less. Smart, huh? Gun Dealio. Made in America, gluten-free. At the App Store and Google Play or gundilio.com. Okay, so I said I was gonna talk about something that we did at the range this week. We were out shooting some stuff for the Guns and Gear TV show. And Jim and Michelle, I know you guys have done the same thing. We love shooting jugs of water, just because they blow up, right?
Right.
Reaction targets. So we do that a lot, because we could shoot the jugs, you know, blowing up with slow motion cameras and all that. That's fun. And we shoot them typically with the nines and 45s. Well, it's been actually a long time since we've shot 357 Magnum. So we loaded it up with little 38 wad cutters and was shooting, you know, cardboard with it. And said, well, let's go shoot some water jugs. So I got some old ammo. Michelle, it was old Winchester Silver Tip loads.
Yeah.
We're talking way back. 125 grain, which forever, that's always been the standard for law enforcement, is the 125 grain hollow point 357 Magnum was the standard for one-shot stopping power on bad guys. And so Ryan, I'm running one of the cameras, we've got two camera guys, we've got three cameras rolling, and Ryan's doing the shooting. And we've got these water jugs, one gallon water jugs, he's probably seven yards back. And he shoots the first one and absolutely gets soaked. And this thing blew up so much.
From that far away?
Oh, yeah. I mean, you can see him, it's like he gets hit with this water and stops for a second, goes, and you can hear him in his head thinking, well, I'm already wet, might as well just keep going. And he shot six of them off of there, and it just, I mean, he is soaked. It just, like you poured water all over him. It was hilarious, and it made a funny little bit of, but it was also one of those reminders of, man, that is a load and a half. I can see why that's always been the standard. I would take that over a 45, six different ways to Sunday.
Yeah, what a round. And I think with, with the semi-autos popularity, people just have forgotten about them.
I think you're probably right.
Yeah.
No, don't say that. That's not gonna set a precedent.
I just, I think it's probably the, the focus on the carry amount of ammunition is where most people have gone to. Plus, they're lightweight guns, so, you know, you're talking about a heavy frame pistol that you're shooting, I'm sure. But, yeah, it's always been the sidearm for police for years and years and years.
Now, ballistically, that's like a 10, right?
It's pretty close to a 10. And, you know, and think about it, that's what the 357 Sig cartridge was supposed to do, was put that same round into a semi-auto. So they took a 10mm case and necked it down to put a 357 cart, or bullet rather, into it. And so, you know, now you're getting 1300, 1400 feet per second out of 125 grain bullet, which is pretty darn close. It's real close to the revolver 357 Magnum, but now you've got it in a semi-auto with more ammo.
Right. Well, and Coonan, of course, took the 357 and made a 357 1911 type gun.
Yes. And they, and they run well, which is interesting. Did anybody else ever do that with a rimmed cartridge? I don't remember anybody doing it.
Not that I can think of.
Coonan was, yeah.
Explain why that's a problem, Tom.
Well, it's just a case of the way it feeds and the way the case head spaces, when the round goes into the barrel, the old question is, what's gonna stop it from keeping all the, going all the way into the barrel? Well, in the case of a 9 or a 45, it's the case mouth itself, the end of the brass case, basically goes into a little bit of, what would you call it? The chamber is there and it stops at the end of the chamber before it goes to barrel.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. And then with a rim cartridge, it slides in until the rim hits the back of the barrel and stops.
Okay.
And while I don't do, you know, I can't design a gun, I could barely even run one, evidently that is a challenge to make a semi-auto run with rimmed cases. So I'm not sure what the issue is there.
I wonder if it's extraction?
Maybe they have it stacked up in the magazine. Think about that. They have to stack, the rim is larger diameter than the case is.
Ah, okay.
Same way with spy 22 autos, not in a semi-auto typically. I mean, Caltech makes one, but, yeah.
Huh.
Manufacturing...
I know what I'm gonna be doing this week.
Manufacturing one, or coming and buying a 357?
3D printer.
Oh, 3D printer, okay, yeah.
I'm thinking that 357 Sig is a pretty cool cartridge, really. Or just get a 10.
There you go.
I keep seeing more companies bringing out 10s. I don't know if it's, you know, if it's a real growing interest, or if they're just all of a sudden saying, well, we need to get into some areas that were kind of marginal before, we didn't need to, but now we need to be filling all those niches.
I was just gonna say, I think it's a niche spot. You know, we've had a couple of Colt, of course, is back, so their Delta Elite 10 is back. And they don't stick around too long. And I think it's just something that there's not a lot of, and so that interest is there. And it's like, you better get it now, if you're even thinking about it, because they're hard to get. They're hard to find.
Well, and tips, for whatever reason, typically, companies will come out with a 10 for a while, and two to four years later, they take it out of the line, probably because it didn't sell. And so if you want one, you probably ought to get one while it's out there. And not, don't say, well, I'm gonna get one of those one of these days.
Right.
Or buy two and wait five years and sell one of them.
There's that too. You can sort of do that. So Michelle, you did show and tell today. What did you bring in to show the rest of us today?
Come on, hold it up to the mic.
Can you see it? Do you see it now, Tom?
Yes.
Okay.
It's fabulous.
Well, we were, we were talking about what kind of shooting are you into, and I was sharing with Jim that we are doing the skirmishing, which I explained how all of that works. And it is a Smith carbine that I brought in today, which is a single shot rifle. And, and of course, Jim is just like, what? He's never seen it.
I thought it was a shotgun.
Yeah, he thought it was a shotgun.
It's a black powder cartridge rifle.
Right.
Brake action.
Yep, brake action. And...
What caliber is it?
50 caliber. So we make our own lead bullets for it. And so, you know, all winter long, we're, we, mostly my husband, but I do help.
Engaging in lead poisoning of everyone in the home.
Yes, 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 you know. Now, we've got, we've got all of our windows open and proper ventilation going on.
Okay.
And we don't do it in the house. But we mold the lead bullets and in springtime, we get ready for all of our nationals and our shooting for the year. But it's a lot of fun. It's a plastic tube, bullet goes in the end and, you know, your powder fills up the backside and you put your little end cap on there. And it works just like a muzzleloader, because it works off of a percussion cap. It's a musket cap. And, gosh, it's great fun. They shoot well. They've been around for, well, since the Civil War, Sharps rifles.
Yes. People don't understand how well those old rifles shot. And then, you know, the movie Quickly Down Under was pretty true, actually. Those, you know, the buffalo hunters could really hit things way out there. Those are some good rifles.
You put your little washer underneath there, raise up the sight for your 100 yards. It's pretty complicated stuff.
You just do what you have to do. They figured out a way, didn't they?
They did. And like Jim said, wow, for the age of it.
It looked like it was manufactured in the 50s or 60s.
Couldn't believe it. So, they're, they're beautiful. Lot of history out there when you go to these different shoots you can pick up on.
Yes. Well, when you start dealing with collectors, and I kinda call the skirmishers collectors, the collectors of experience and all of that, but they have these cool guns, you start talking to them about the guns and what you hear is not so much the gun as the history around the gun, don't you?
Right. Well, and to be part of these groups, I mean, you dress in the attire that they were known for during wartime. So, you know, yes, you do have a uniform, and it is based off of the peasant type of shirt and pants. And, and sometimes it's a calico mixed max version of, you know, what that area was known for. So it is a lot of history. So I say, sometimes even if you're not into shooting, going out to Camp Perry, going out to Friendship Indiana, going to these different forts where these shoots are going on, gosh, you take away a lot of history, lot of information for kids and families.
It's also a great place to take kids, because there's stuff going on. They've got booms and smoke.
Right.
And people dressed up in costumes and, you know, uniforms and everything from the period, and then they go up and ask questions. It's pretty, it's like a living museum.
It is. And the NSSF, of course, has that first shot on us type of program going on. So you can take a shot for free, you know, at some of these different ranges and kinda get them hooked in the excitement there. It's like, oh, I wanna do, I wanna do it some more. So, and that's how we have to keep it going. We have to keep our living history.
Absolutely. I mean, it's what we have to do. So, that's neat. Well, thank you for bringing that in and showing it to everybody.
Absolutely.
You have to use your imagination, people. Google up Smith carbine, right?
I was just gonna say, yes, you can look it up.
That's right. Through the power of the web, it's unbelievable. We can now know everything.
That's right.
Like how to shoot yourself in the leg, eventually.
Yeah. Did you guys see?
That's our hometown, you know, by the way.
Just back a few weeks. Oh, yeah, that's, you're so proud, I'm sure.
Oh, geez.
You guys saw the robbery, the guy with the gun in the, it was a pizza place, I guess, where he came in, stuck the gun in the guy's face after he forced a malfunction?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, yeah, the jam.
The gun is jammed.
Yep.
And the clerk is so cool, but you're just thinking, okay, he, you know, everything was cool till he jammed his own gun. And then, of course, he had no idea. You know, of course, I'm thinking, if that's me, I'm just gonna shoot the dude, because now I know he can't shoot me. So we're just gonna get that out of the way. But it worked out. They caught him and the clerk didn't get hurt and all of that. But then there was a video that came out this week of a shooting at a gas station where a guy just comes over and jumps into the car with this guy to carjack him. And they ended up with a shootout right there. Did you guys see that video?
No.
Oh, man. Yeah, it's, it's real. I mean, and the good guy shot the bad guy and he returned him to room temperature.
Wow.
Aw, what a shame.
Yeah.
I hate when that happens.
Yeah, I know. Occupational hazard, you know. I wonder if they have insurance to cover that.
God, I hate when that happens. You got any popcorn?
Yeah.
Sorry, I'm just, not, not real moved to be concerned about that.
But the judiciary process after that is a nightmare. It's gotta be.
Oh, no doubt.
Well, it can be, and it has been in a lot of cases. But sometimes, particularly now that we have, like in this case, you've got video of the whole thing, it's one of those you go, okay, any questions? No, I didn't think so. Everybody go home. And it's, and they didn't charge this guy, they didn't arrest him or anything.
I think all that loosened up too, don't you? In general, I mean, not lax, but...
Yeah, some places.
The family can still press charges if they wanted to, right?
Civilly, sure. Well, no, they can't press charges. That's the interesting part. People say, well, I'm gonna press charges. Actually, as an individual, you can't do anything. Only the police can charge people.
Okay, so prosecutor.
They can decide not to.
Yeah, okay.
But they, yeah. But the family can sue, you know, civil suit.
Right.
Because this thug murderer, carjacker, who has a record as long as, you know, my arm, all of a sudden was, he was gonna turn his life around, of course.
Yeah, he was in college.
I love it. He was, he was a good boy. No, he was a criminal. He was a career criminal. He was committing crimes at the age of seven, you know, and nobody ever turned it around. And so I'm real sorry that it went this way, but it was a case of this guy who offers no benefit, I'm sorry, I'm just gonna say it, no benefit to society whatsoever, and somebody else who's a productive member of society, one of them was gonna come out of this thing alive. And in this case, I think it turned out okay. Too harsh?
Yeah, it's the real world, buddy.
There it is.
It's what it is.
If you don't wanna get shot robbing someone, then don't rob someone.
Ah, there's a novel idea.
Yeah, just an idea.
Pretty basic.
I'm just saying. That's kinda what it is. The variation on don't be there, right?
Kinda like stop when you're yelled, stop.
Well, it's like the thing you talked about, about today, about the, you can't wear a bulletproof vest within 1,000 feet of a school. I'm sure that's gonna stop a potential school shooter from shooting up a school, because he can't wear his vest. Darn it.
Right. It's just silly on the face of it. And then you got the people say, but we have to do something, even if it's nonsensical.
It makes us feel good.
Are you listening to yourself? If it saves only one life, well, it won't.
No, but...
It's not going to.
But don't like it on social media.
Yeah, the kid who, on Instagram, he put a like on a picture of an airsoft gun, and the next day he shows up at school and they pat him down and check him for weapons, and then they throw him out of school because he pressed like on Instagram for a photo of an airsoft gun. And then the principal even went further, the superintendent actually said, well, in cases like that, we have to take action and we have to just assume that anything that has to do with firearms is a threat.
Just watching Jim's eyes roll in his head.
It's not zero tolerance, it's zero intelligence. It's ridiculous.
We have to assume that anything involving firearms is a threat. No, well, if it were an Olympic shooter, or if it were a police officer, or if it was somebody shooting competitive trap or skeet or sporting clays, that's not a threat. And neither was this. This is just stupid.
It's what we've come to.
Okay, got an idea. I think I've talked to this before. What if we nationally just came up with a program? We could come up with one right now. We'll start the ball rolling on it. And that is a, each, in each district, school district, you have a group of, you know, three, four, five, six people who go to, gun people who go to every school board meeting. And, you know, they're usually like at seven o'clock or something. So you go out and have an early dinner and you always go there. That's just your monthly night out. And you're just simply there, always, month after month after month, to watch them and see what they're doing. And then occasionally maybe bring up, let's talk about the zero tolerance policy. The next month, let's talk about the zero tolerance policy. And, you know, just on and on and on. And, you know, if we're not there, nothing's gonna happen for us. And then we complain about stuff like this. If we're there, we say, okay, here's the deal. We're going to make it miserable for you. That's what we're here for. Because when you do stupid stuff, like throwing a kid out of school for liking a photograph of an airsoft gun, we're going to hold you up to ridicule, because that's what should happen. But if we don't do that, who are we, who are we actually complaining about?
Did that ever hit national news?
Yeah, well, not the big national news. It made the web and we all shared that story. But you're right, it didn't make national news.
Right.
I think probably, there's some guy over at Fox who specializes in those kinds of stories. Can't remember the guy's name. And I think that got picked up. But that, you make a good point, Michelle. It did not get picked up by national news.
Right. I, I think of Ann wanting to go to Berkeley and make this big speech, and she got told that she couldn't go and...
Ann Coulter.
Ann Coulter, yeah. And, you know, how, for weeks, that's all you heard on the news was how Second Amendment rights and First Amendment rights are being taken away, and we're concerned more about second than first. And, but, you know, this is flipped around on the other side now. So where's the people crying out on this one? Where's the injustice on this side? Just saying.
The, by the way, the, this 10-day suspension of this kid was actually in Ohio, Edgewood Middle School student. And Edgewood...
I think Cincinnati area.
Road trip.